Cindy, come over to introduce the subject matter of the special week.
Thank you, Chairman and any commissioners. Good afternoon. As part of your budget process, one of the items that we do want to update you on is the water master plan and update to that. In 2011, we did a master water and wastewater plan that was adopted by the board at that point in time and believe it's appropriate at this point in time to update it as we continue forward with the capital improvement programs for new expansion as well as ongoing maintenance. And with that, I will turn it over to Ed Kosicki, who is our Executive Director over Public Works.
Thanks, Cindy. Any commissioners, Mr. Chairman? Also with me is Aubrey Lofton. Aubrey is the Director of our Planning and Resource Management Division and is really the owner of a lot of this update, as well as some of our other staff consultants are here also. As Cindy said, what we wanted to do today was provide the board with an update of our water and wastewater master plan. Today is the water aspect. Next Monday, we have another session scheduled with you to go over wastewater. Primary purpose that we want to accomplish in doing this is really to update the facility and capital plan through the changes in program direction since the original plan was developed and adopted by the Board in 2011. We want to present to you the changes in the FY '16 capital improvement program resulting from these shifts in direction and specifically identify for you tonight some of the major changes from last year's capital budget as it relates to water compared to the FY '17 budget you'll be seeing as part of the budget presentation that you'll be getting shortly. One thing I want to say just about planning in general and water planning, as soon as the plan was adopted, it was already becoming obsolete. And that's just the nature of planning in any arena. I think it was George Patton was credited with, you know, all the good battle plans work up until the first shot is fired. And water and wastewater plants have a little more stability than that, but directions change, policy changes, situations outside of control change. And that's what we want to walk you through. What were some of the changes that took place after the board was adopted and how do we adapt to those? Just by quick background for the audience that may be watching, right now, Union County relies heavily on our Catawba Water Treatment Plant to meet our water supply needs. Catawba Plant, which is jointly owned with Lancaster Water and Sewer District, supplies up to 80% of the water needs in Union County. The other 20% of our needs come through a purchase water agreement with Anson County. So this is our current situation where all the areas in green on this map are receiving water essentially from the Catawba Water Treatment Plant. The areas in blue are receiving water from the Anson Water Treatment Plant. And that dark blue line down the middle of the green area is the boundary between the Yatkin Basin and the Catawba Basin. And as this board knows, we have very stringent regulations in the state about taking water from one river basin and using it in another. And we are limited to how much water we can take from Catawba and use in the Yatkin. And that has been driving our planning since 2011 is how we manage the regulatory constraints of this IBT legislation and meet our growing needs in Yatkin and continue to meet our growing needs in Catawba. So when the master plan was adopted in 2011, there were some major assumptions that went into that plan. The plan, first of all, assumed a continued partnership with Anson County to meet future Yatkin water supply needs. So the plan at that time, Anson County, again, right now, we purchase up to 4 million gallons per day of water from them. The plan at that time was that we would build on that agreement and enter into a partnership with them to build a new and expanded water treatment plant. The plan also assumed that we would increase the amount of water we take from Catawba and bring to Yatkin. Right now, we're limited to 5 million gallons per day based upon a grandfathered IBT coming back into the 1997 regulations. Plan in 2011 was to increase that up to 10 million gallons per day. And the rationale for that was that in South Carolina, where we have our water treatment plant with Lancaster Water and Sewer District, the permit for that plant in South Carolina recognizes that that joint venture, us and Lancaster, can move up to 20 million gallons per day from the Catawba to the Yatkin. So in South Carolina, we share in 20 million gallons per day, but in North Carolina, we only had five. The plan back in 2011 said, is there some way for us to optimize that South Carolina IBT and expand this benefit, this permit limitation in North Carolina? When we ran the numbers back then, the plan said to meet our water supply demand, we would need to expand the Catawba Water Supply Project, that water treatment plant, by 2017. So a year from now, we were planning on having a new water treatment plant expansion online in order to meet that need. The plan also assumed that we would increase our purchase water capacity from Anson from four to six million gallons per day to get to meet some of the short-term demands and at the same time, start negotiations with them on a partnership for a new, larger, expanded water treatment plant. The water distribution improvements in Union from Anson were not very well defined because we had not locked down an agreement with Anson to expand that plant and we did not want to spend a lot of time and engineering effort to define how we would get water through the county until we had that deal in place. So just graphically, again, what this is from, the 2011 master plan showed that here's our demand curve of what kind of flows we think we're going to need. The areas underneath are our capacity. This is our Catawba capacity in the dark blue, our Yatkin capacity from Anson in the light blue, and showed that by 2017, we need to pump up our capacity in the Catawba Plant and again, have an Anson expansion online by 2023, 2022 timeframe. Again, a detailed graphic just showing, and this is more for the engineering group than for the commission group, just showing that here is our limit as how much water we could pump across the basin. Here's how much we were actually pumping across the basin. Here's how much we had some return. We were planning on increasing that up to 10, allowing us to use that expansion in the Catawba Plant. So we were going to expand Catawba in 2017, be able to use that expanded capacity in the Yatkin. None of that happened. We didn't do that. Again, from the early get-go, some of the things had changed dramatically. Some of the good news of what changed is that water demand projections are down somewhat dramatically from what they were in 2009, 2010 timeframe when we were putting the plan together. Our per capita consumption, which is the average amount of water each of our customers use, has consistently come down over the years. And that's just a good indication of water conservation and good water management by our customers, and we're glad to see that. Most significantly for us, our peak demand is down. And the peak demand is the ratio between our worst day to our average day for the year. So what's the worst day we had in terms of the maximum amount of water any of our customers wanted? Compare that worst single day to the annual average, and that ratio is what we're looking at. Back in 2006, 2007, in the 2007 drought, our max day, our worst day during that drought, our customers were using more than two times the average day demand. And unfortunately, in water treatment and water distribution, we have to build a water capacity to meet that worst day condition. We can't tell our customers, sorry, we have no water for you today because you all happen to be asking for a lot. So you have to meet that max day demand. So water conservation, our conservation rate structures, better education to our customers, our change irrigation scheduling, we've been able to reduce that peak demand. Our master plan in 2011 assumed a peak demand of 1.9. We're actually have lowered that in our updated plan to 1.7, and we're staying in those ratios now even with the drought conditions we had earlier this year, almost a year ago now. If you remember, as we went into the summer, we had one of the worst three months of drought that we've seen probably since 2007. So we've kept that down. What that did for us was buy us some time. It shifted when we needed to have that capacity now online. So again, that was very good news that we managed that capacity and brought those peak flows down. On the bad news side, our Catawba Water Treatment Plant expansion got delayed due to permitting issues. One of our first things we wanted to do before we moved forward on a plant expansion was get the reservoir project up and going. And that reservoir just took longer and longer and longer between the Army Corps and South Carolina DHEC to get those permits in place. They're all in place right now. We're out for a rebid on that project in the next couple of weeks moving forward, but it did delay our ability to move forward. Again, as I noted, Anson basically came back and told us, I don't want to partner with you. Happy to sell you water, happy to sell you 6 million gallons per day, not really comfortable about entering into a partnership where we would own an equity share of their water treatment plant. That was the direction that the master plan was sending us in, that the board sent us in. If we were going to have, if we were going to be half or more than half of the total capacity of the treatment plant going into the future, we said, we need to have an equity share and an ownership right in that facility and not just be a customer. Basically, Anson came back, said we weren't comfortable with that kind of arrangement, and that's what started us looking to other partners and specifically what brought us to the town of Norwood. And in 2011, we started those conversations. 2013, we entered into agreement with Norwood. At the same time that we were looking at these alternatives in the '12, '13 timeframe of who to partner with, we backed away from trying to expand our IBT. We looked at the ramifications of trying to increase Catawba to Yatkin IBT, and we looked at the cost issues. And what we realized as we explored this further is that in the 20-year timeframe, there was no real cost savings. We delayed the challenge we had or the benefit we had. The next expansion of the Catawba Plant is a relatively inexpensive expansion because all of our pipeline is in the ground right now to bring that volume of water to Union County. The next expansion after that Catawba gets very expensive because we've got to parallel all that pipe. The first construction of the Yatkin project, of a new Yatkin supply is expensive because there is no pipe in the ground, we've got to build it. The second expansion of Yatkin is cheap because the pipe will be there. So when you compare the two on a 20-year, it came out to about the same cost. We said, it doesn't pay us to fight that fight to try to get additional IBT, put the additional capacity into the Yatkin Plant. Just a graphical representation of what our demand curves look like. The red line was the demand curve from the 2011 master plan. The blue line is where we are right now. You can see we've dropped pretty significantly as we look forward. The blue dots are our actual max day for each of those years, and you can see how it really has come down from that 2007 timeframe where we had, you know, some of our worst peaks in 2007, 2008, brought them down, and now you're seeing growth come back up here. Again, talk briefly about the Catawba being stalled. What this new master plan does then is instead of expanding Catawba, as was originally planned in 2007, we're now looking at moving the Catawba expansion out as far as 2025, maybe even 2027. So we're literally slipping that plant expansion 10 years. And we're able to accomplish that because of a few things. One, because our demand is down and our peak demand is down, our per capita consumption is down. So we're having a little less demand in the system. More importantly, we've leased capacity from our partner. So our partner Lancaster Water and Sewer District agreed to lease us, let us use some of their capacity for a period of time. And right now, we have an agreement in place with them through January of 2019 where we've leased an additional 3 million gallons per day of capacity. And what our partners were looking at was, again, we own half of that treatment plant capacity. So we own 18 million gallons per day, they own 18 million. We were close to using all of our capacity, like this year, we topped 18. They weren't. So they said, instead of us expanding this treatment plant and them being party to an expansion that they really didn't want, let us lease you some of that capacity and delay when we need to expand the plant. So we entered into an agreement with them. We originally entered into it for five years. We extended that out to January of 2019 where we have 3 million gallons per day. So our share of that plant now, instead of being 18, is now 21. To make this work going forward though, to get us through the next seven or eight years, we're going to need even more capacity in that treatment plant. So we're going to have to go from 21 to either 24, 23, in that kind of range. And to do that, we're going to need to lease more water from them. To make that work, we actually start running out of capacity in the treatment plant then, you know, between their growth and our growth. And what they are exploring with us is them purchasing short-term water supply from Charlotte Water. So what we're doing here is trying to very actively manage the capacity we have. So instead of going in and trying to expand, you know, $20 million on a plant expansion, by actively managing the capacity of the joint venture and then the joint venture working with our neighbor to provide a short-term, two to three years of additional capacity, we think we could stretch the Catawba Plant until after our new Yatkin Supply is online. And that puts off a $20 million expenditure out from what would have been in 2017, 2018, all the way up to 2024, 25, and beyond. In that process, what we've done, the Yatkin Project was originally when it was going to be Anson. It was scheduled for like 2024, 2025. We now said, we need that to be online in 2022 timeframe is when we're looking to have that online. This is just looking at our capacity. The blue background is our capacity in the Catawba Plant, and right now, we're at 21 million gallons per day. And you can see, if we stay at 21 million gallons per day, this is our average demand in green, our max day demand in this purple line. And the reason between the difference between this red and purple is in 2014, our agreement with City of Monroe kicked in and said, we're going to allocate an additional 1.9 million gallons per day of capacity for the City of Monroe through our Catawba Plant. So since April of 2014, Monroe has two MGD essentially of capacity from us in the Catawba System, so we have to account for that. They're not using it right now, and they're not growing that rapidly, but we need to make sure we accounted for that. So you can see, in the 2019 timeframe, we start to exceed our available capacity, and that's why we're looking at by 2018, 2019 to increase our lease, bump this blue line up to 23, 24 million gallons per day and carry that forward. It drops down here because at this point, we will then have our Yatkin Treatment Plant onboard, and we won't need to rely as much on Catawba. We'll be using our new Yatkin Supply. So again, this is an aggressive management strategy on the part of staff to optimize our partnership with Lancaster Water and Sewer District and to optimize the relationships we have with City of Charlotte in being able to secure some short-term capacity for now. We have been in discussions with Charlotte Water, both Union County and Lancaster. They have the physical ability to deliver the water there. In fact, we looked at, did they have the physical ability to deliver that additional 2 million gallons directly to Union through our interconnects on Providence Road? And they were just concerned they physically couldn't get that much water through those pipelines, but they can get it into Lancaster, up through the Panhandle area of Lancaster. So to meet total system demand, lots of graphs, we're engineers, we're planners, we like graphs and charts. We do need to have the Yatkin Project online in 2022, and we are on schedule to make that happen. So this is a graph, again, similar step graph where we're looking to background color is our system capacity. How much do we have? How much are we planning on? And the lines are the demand curves. How much water do we need to provide? And we show both the average day demand and the max day. And you can see right now, you know, we're getting a little tight in 2019 as we showed earlier, but we were thinking we'll be able to make this work with our Catawba partnership and with Charlotte. But it's really showing that we do need to get that Yatkin capacity onboard, which is this medium blue color. This is the new Yatkin water supply project. Get that onboard by 2022, really give us the capacity we need. Put that Catawba expansion out somewhere into the mid to late 20s and then be another expansion of the Yatkin Project somewhere in the mid to mid 2030s. So where are we on the Yatkin Project since we've got a lot of eggs in this basket? We're in this phase right now, the interlocal agreement with Norwood was executed back in 2013 after about a year plus of negotiations. Up until last week, this said 2016, it now says 2017, we were hoping we would have our IBT signed, sealed, and delivered by the December Environmental Management Commission meeting. If we can get our Secretary of DEQ and the Division Director of Water Quality on the same page with staff as to who could sign these documents and who can. We might have made that month, but we just, every time we miss a date with the EMC, it's a two-month delay because they only meet every other month. And they just missed, we just missed the May date, literally because they couldn't decide who's going to sign the document that would forward on to the EMC. Was it going to be the Secretary? Was he going to delegate it? Was that person going to delegate it? So we think we got it resolved, but you know, we've missed our May deadline. So that kicked us from December into hopefully no more than February of the following year. We are already into our Lake Use Permit, which is the other big permit. The IBT permit is the permit to be able to take water from Yatkin, bring it into the Rocky River Basin, sub-basin of the Yatkin. The Lake Use Permit is dealing with FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission because of the fact that Lake Tillery is a hydroelectric power generating facility. They permit the operations on those lakes, and since we're going to be on that lake with our intake, they have to be involved in that. You can see the construction is almost anticlimatic compared to the permitting and planning on this, but we are still looking, are comfortable with the date of the end of 2021, start of 2022. And with that, we want to show you a nice little video that we put together on the Yatkin Project. The Yatkin Project does have its own website, yatkinwater.com. If that stops turning, it'll come up. Worked an hour ago. So this is the Yatkin Water Supply webpage. I'm not going to go through the whole webpage on you right now, but yatkinwater.com if you want to look at. This is a quick three-minute video we could go explain the project.
Water needs are more precious to us than water. And at Union County, we proactively manage the water for residents within our extensive service areas in both the Catawba and Yatkin River Basins. We do it to provide for the health of our environment, the vibrancy of our recreational opportunities, the growth of our economy, and the sustainability of our water supply. But did you know water needs within the county's Yatkin River Basin Water Service Area will exceed available supply limits by the year 2020? Union County has Yatkin River Basin service area that is growing, and with this growth comes the demand for water. To meet the growing water needs of users in this service area, it is the responsibility of Union County to identify opportunities to provide a long-term, sustainable water supply solution for its citizens and community. So how do we plan to secure the water future of our region? One answer includes a new source, the Yatkin Regional Water Supply. This project is a collaborative effort between Union County and the Town of Norwood in Stanley County. It will provide a new water supply source to Union County's Yatkin River Basin residents and new updated infrastructure to the Town of Norwood. This project will include a new community has access to the water it needs. Stay informed on the Yatkin Regional Water Supply Project by visiting us on the web at www.yatkinwater.com. Yatkin Water, for Yatkin Needs. Few things are more precious to us than water.
You're on the press, I can tell. No applause, nothing. Tough, tough audience. As part of the Yatkin Project, again, we were hoping today to be able to tell you that we had a record of decision on the environmental impact statement. And that's the document we're waiting for the Department of Environmental Quality to sign off on and submit then to the EMC saying, yes, we reviewed this and yes, we agree this is the best alternative. We thought we would have it last week, and we thought we'd have it this week, and literally going through who's going to sign it, forward it on. So it's this close. As part of the environmental impact statement associated with this IBT application, we obviously had to go through a lot of preliminary engineering to look at multiple alternatives. And so we had to go to the point of actually doing some preliminary engineering on route alternatives to decide just what this would look like. And the preferred alternative, which we have submitted to the state, is, as the video said, a water intake on Lake Tillery, approximately a 21-mile pipeline following this general alignment to a water treatment plant location somewhere in the northeast part of Union County. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. In looking at the water treatment plant site, we went through a very specific siting criteria. One of our primary criterias is that we need to be able to pump the water all the way to that treatment plant without having to repump it. If we went too far into Union County, we would literally want to have to build another interim pump station in order to get the water all the way there. We would like our water treatment plant to be closer to our customer demand. You know, the challenges in the water industry right now is we're not controlled at the end of the treatment plant anymore. 20, 30 years ago, when I got into the water industry, it was all about end of the treatment plant and what's your water quality there, then you put it in the pipe and send it on to your customers. More and more, we're being held accountable for the quality of the water to the customer at the treatment, at the customer's tap. I'm sure all of you are very familiar with the Flint, Michigan issue, on the lead issues in Flint, Michigan. That's not an issue at their water treatment plant, that is an issue at the tap, and it's degradation that takes place at the plumbing. And more and more issues are coming into play like that. You've heard about chloramines and trihalomethanes and other chemicals that we monitor, and a lot of those are monitored in the distribution system as well as at the plant. So we want that plant near where people are going to use it to the extent we can. Obviously, we want to be near our major water lines. We want to be near a major power source because we need energy to drive this plant. Roads would be good so we can get to it. We need sufficient acreage. We need appropriate topography, relatively level site that we could build upon. We need to mitigate the environmental impacts. We need land that we can acquire. We'd like to have willing sellers when we look at this, and we'd like to have public acceptance, so we need to be very aware of what's around us. So we did some preliminary analysis to look at potential sites that would be available, and we basically focused in on three general areas, all of which are in the northeast corner of Union County. So the three we looked at, we titled them Areas A, B, and C. And within each of these general areas, we've identified some parcels that we think can work, and that's how we came up with them, but we have not locked these down into particular parcels at this time. Area A is actually a site that was identified several years ago in the previous studies looking at an Anson extension, and it was also looked at as part of a regional water treatment plant that would serve neighboring Stanley County as well as possibly Cabarrus County. And it drove it up into this boundary area with the county with the thinking it may serve other jurisdictions in that area. serve other jurisdictions in that area. As we got into, we looked to see how far could we push this into our service area? And this is about as far as we could go. When we tried to go closer into the center of population beyond this general line here, we would have to double pump again. So we identified those, those three general areas, and one in the Morgan Mill, Unionville area, one near New Salem Road, the other off of 218 up in the New Salem area. We had to identify then both finished water and raw water lines. How are we going to get water from the river to those treatment plants? And then how do we get water from those treatment plants into the rest of our distribution system? So this slide shows the raw water alignments. All three follow the same alignment to this area, and then if we built a Plant B or a Plant C, we'd have those additional pipelines. Likewise on finished water, if we build a plant in Area A, we'd have a pipeline that would run this way and this way to connect into our system. Built a Plant A, we'd have to go this way and this way. Plant C, this and this. So we look at how do we tie again into our major infrastructure? And the ties essentially, we have a major water line that runs along US 74 here, and we have other major 36-inch transmission lines over in this area. And that's really where we needed to make those connections was into this area and into this area. So we looked at the cost of these different alternatives. And when you look at the initial cost in the 2020 timeframe, and then we also looked at the cost in the 2050 build-out kind of timeframe, which is the long-term we're looking at. And in the initial timeframe, you can see alternatives B and C are very close, and about a 5% difference to Site A, which is up in the New Salem area. As you get out into the 2050, the costs all get pretty close together here. When you're looking at, you know, no more than $9 million difference on the $300 million approximate cost, you're getting pretty close. For that reason, staff's recommendation was that we would focus on A and B and C as the preferred alternatives for where we would look to identify a site. And we did our piping analysis and costing for the CIP based upon a treatment plant somewhere in this general area rather than up on this area. One of the other benefits we get from this is in building this major transmission main, which you can see all three alternatives wind up with a pipeline here. We get some significant resiliency in our system. And this is a complicated graph to walk through, and I'll just talk briefly about what this means. What we did was look at, okay, we build this infrastructure and we put this treatment plant, this pipeline in place, what happens if the Catawba treatment plant goes down? There's a major contamination on the Catawba River, and we have to be off the Catawba River for a period of time. And we have a situation, thankfully, much smaller in scale, just last year where we had an oil tanker, gasoline spill, I'm sorry. We had a track or trail overturn on South Carolina 5, crossing the Catawba River, spilt, their diesel fuel tank ruptured, spilling diesel fuel into the river. We had to get off the river for a couple of days. If that turned into a couple of weeks, we would have been in really stressed territory. What the graph is showing is that here's our Yatkin supply alone. The area in this reddish brown is if we exercise every emergency interconnect and upgraded, upgraded the Yatkin for a small period of time, what additional capacity can we get out of the system? And what it's showing is that once the Yatkin project is onboard, we're getting close to meeting our average day demand, not that max day that we talked about, but the average day demand with just that one plant for a period of time. And even exercising in the 2030 timeframe, when we have the next expansion of Yatkin onboard, we get close to even meeting our max day demand for a short period of time with one plant out of service. And I have a similar graph that shows similar results if we had to shut the Yatkin down and just keep the Catawba onboard. So there's some significant benefit to having two water treatment sources, two water treatment plants as our master plant's providing, and building this significant 36-inch pipeline interconnect to allow us to move water one way or the other. Yes, Mr.?
What's the minimum size to supply to residents? You wouldn't supply residents with 36-inch?
No, the 36-inch, these major water lines that we're showing on these lines, typically we wouldn't let residents tap into those pipelines.
What's the minimum size you would?
The minimum size here, we're looking at a 24-inch and the largest is 36 in these things.
What line goes current then, 218, 24-inch?
I think it's a 12-inch that runs along 218. So yeah, we'll be backfeeding. If you went with one of these, you'd backfeed into that system to serve that 218 car.
Where do we have current, do we have lines all up and down Morgan Mill?
We don't go continuously up Morgan Mill. We have Morgan, there's a couple of blanks on Morgan Mill. We do have major lines going up 601 all the way is our major connection up this way, and we have some additional water lines going up 200. So we have a pretty good network in that area. It's not completely looped on Morgan Mill, but there is a good network of pipes out there.
What about 205? Is there currently a 24-inch line on 205?
No.
How do we make that move on 218? It goes to New Salem?
Yeah, right now, I think we have, Scott, can you speak to that a little better than I can? Scott Honeycutt is our Director of our Engineering Division.
We currently have a 12-inch line on New Salem Road to 218. There's nothing that I'm aware of on 205 that exists.
So one thing would be if we did it in Area A, that could allow for a line to go down into Marshall, 24-inch line?
But that line, again, you would not tap into that line. That'd be a major water transmission line.
The 24-inch?
Yeah, that 24-inch, those are the kind of pipelines that are meant to just deliver water from one area of the county to the next, and you don't want to be punch holes.
You could put a smaller line in conjunction with the larger line for residents.
You would have to run a parallel line, yeah, for residential use.
In the same construction, right? I just, I really have a big problem sending clean water past people's houses, especially up in that area where there's arsenic issues and things like that. If we have a bigger problem sending dirty water past people's houses, so I would like to see as much as possible that we can provide clean water to as many residents in Union County as possible. Yeah, I know your recommendations be received, and I like A just for the fact of being able to get clean water, to get more people in the county. A lot of people have been waiting, you know, to like water.
In terms of getting the water to the people, it's really, that's going to be another cost issue in terms of who pays to run those pipelines to those residents. Regardless of which site we have, again, we've got water infrastructure in that general area. This pipeline won't get any more water to allow any additional customers to connect to these pipes. So it's all about tapping into that existing network of pipes we have, and where do we expand them to, and where do we network them in? And I think that's a water line extension policy discussion for the board on how do we provide service to those other areas of Union County.
Yeah, you, that brings up a point, you know. West Park County is maxing out on this population. I mean, it's, and our growth, we're going to have growth in this area. So if we don't build it into our system right now, we're going to pay triple for it in the future. And I think that's what the chairman was hinting to, that I understand these are major trunk lines, but we have to have the ability that as with bypass and everything else to be able to provide water. I mean, because arsenic is, as a matter of fact, being on the DHS board, I heard about the problems our health departments have because of arsenic in the wells. And it's a real disturbing trend, so as we design this, we have to build in that design to be able to facilitate relieving these concerns out in our community.
And we have built in capacity, assuming a certain percentage of our residents will connect up, that are existing residents. So as part of our planning, we don't only plan for new development, we also plan that some of these residents that are unwell right now will disconnect from well and come onto our system. So we are planning for the capacity, and the challenge that the board members know is, all right, we have a water line in the ground and it's 1,000 feet away or 2,000 feet away, and how do I get that water line extended to my property? And there's significant cost of doing that at about $40 a foot. And we have a short line extension program now, which attempts to chip away at some of those closer in, less than 1,000 feet. But that is a big issue. This master plan does not specifically address how to do that. And I think that is another policy discussion with the board on how would we move forward with water line extensions into which areas, and what's the cost-sharing methodology that you put into place to try to do that? We've had some discussions with the board on the issue of setting up special assessment districts where you have a community that wants water and being able to spread that cost over 20-plus-year basis and try to equalize that down. I gave a brief presentation to the Weddington Town Council at their retreat on a similar issue. They have a community that they're saying was interested in doing just that. Their brand-new water line that developers putting in right outside their front yard and going, well, how do we extend that into our community? That may be an option for them to look at with us. So I think there's discussion that needs to be had in that regard.
And we have made arrangements with DOT with respect to the bypass.
Yes, yeah, with respect to the bypass, I mean, we have made both on the water and sewer side arrangements to either have pipe sleeves put in if we don't know what size pipe we want and when we want it, we're putting a sleeve in so we can run a pipe in the future, or actually building some of the cross-connections there now to get them in place prior to the construction of the bypass.
But right now, the only two methods to expand the service area is our development and the short line extension program.
That's all there is right now, Mr.? So what's the upshot of this in terms of real money? And the numbers get huge, and you can see county manager rolling eyes already. The master plan, when we do master plans, I put two numbers up for 2011 just to show they're the same number, just presented two different ways. When engineers and planners do master plans, they relate all the costs associated with that infrastructure to the year the plan is put together. So when we did the master plan in 2012, just already getting into fiscal year, 2011, fiscal year 2012, all of our costs were identified as fiscal year 2012 dollars, and that's at $529 million. If you take those projects and actually escalate them out to the year you expect them to be constructed, and then add them all up, it was $668 million, which is what we do in our fiscal planning and our rate modeling. We obviously look at the cost in the year we're going to have that cost to make sure we have the appropriate funds. With all the changes we've made in the plan, I mean, we're still 3% change overall, and this is water and sewer, not just water, in terms of the overall plan for the next 20 years. So we made changes in terms of advancing the Yatkin, delaying the Catawba plant, but we're still generally in the same timeframe, same dollar magnitude. So what are the changes? The big changes that we're seeing in dollars from the CIP that the board proved last year to the CIP that will be coming to you this year are essentially three projects. It's the Yatkin project. In FY '16, we did not have the Yatkin project well-defined yet. We were going through alternatives analysis, doing environmental impact statement. We had money budgeted for our finished water distribution, but everything else was kind of lumped in going, well, it could be here, it could be there, it could be there. As we've now defined the preferred alternative, we've costed out that model, and you can see there is a change of some $17 million of additional costs that's come into that project as we've defined all the detailed specifics. Part of that change is the initial plant is now programmed to be a 12-million gallon a day plant. Originally, we were looking at an 8-million gallon a day plant. That's part again of the trade-off between Yatkin and moving Yatkin out, not increasing the IBT. So we're increasing those dollars in Yatkin because we're going to a slightly larger treatment plant. This 853 west zone improvements, bottom line was this project, this is some major water distribution lines in the central part of the county. What we've done was add approximately $5 million more cost to that project in the next few years to start building the first increment of that cross-county finished water main that I showed you in the earlier slide. So we need to do improvements in that area to meet current demand. We said, let's get that segment of pipe in in the next five years as part of this project. And the change on the reduction side was taking $8 million out of the Catawba water treatment plant improvements. In all canter, that number was probably under-budgeted because at the time we budgeted that number, we still were very uncertain what kind of expansion we would have in Catawba, whether it would be a 9-million gallon a day expansion, 12-million gallon, would we be half of that, would be all of that? So we had approximately $8.5 million budget for that expansion. We've now pushed that off again to 2025, so that is an $8 million savings that we have.
Is that our half?
That's our half. So the real question is can we still afford this plant? And we think we can. The rate projections for the next six years beyond, and just to remind the board, right now, the board two years ago approved rate increases for a three-year increment. And this July will be the third of the three-year increment. So for FY '17, the board has already adopted a rate increase of 6.5% two years ago. So the next, what we're looking at is the three years after that and the three years after that. And we'll be discussing this in detail in our wastewater master planning session next week. But what the plan is saying right now is that when we look at water and wastewater together, the rate increases that we were projecting back in 2011 and again in 2014 for that six-year window are still very similar. In fact, are a little bit less than they were in previous rate models that we've run. But one thing we have seen though, to make that work, to keep those rates down, we are going to ask the board as part of this budget to look at our water capacity fee, and we're recommending a significant increase in that water capacity fee. Again, for the audience, capacity fee, when a new customer ties into the system, typically a new developer coming in, I want to put up a 50-unit subdivision, they pay us a capacity fee upfront for their share of the treatment plant and the major water pipeline that we built with our money to be able to serve that new development. And we calculate that out based upon the projected capital needs of the next 20 years and bring that back and go, okay, what's the percentage share or the proportion of share for an equivalent residential unit? And if you're building 50 units, you pay for 50 units. So back in 2012, the rate model recommended a water capacity fee of $2,090 per equivalent residential unit. Our rate at the time was $500. So the board at the time said, wait, but you want to go from $500 to over $2,000? That's just too big of an incremental jump to put in place at one time. We don't think that's appropriate for the development community or for other developers that are looking to Development County and chose instead to do an incremental approach. So 2012, rate that was adopted then was $1,200. So we went from 500 to 1,200. What we're recommending now is essentially go the rest of that way and go, we're recommending $2,400, which essentially would be that 2090 just inflated to today's dollars. It'd actually, that would be about $2,500. So we've come up with a recommendation of $2,400. That has the impact of about 1% to 2% in the water rates by putting this impact fee in place. So when we talk about rates in detail at the next meeting, we'll show you the rate model, show you that if we do not increase the water impact fee and capacity fee to our new development, it will result in a higher rate to all of our customers to generate that same revenue.
So that's just for new development, or would that include also if someone tapped into a line in front of their house?
It's any new connection.
Okay, so it's the tap fee?
Yeah, it's the tap, yeah. Some places call it tap fee, tap and cap, so it's capacity fee, tap fee.
And that's the total?
No, in addition to that, we do charge a four hundred dollar tap fee, which is actually the cost of tapping the pipe, and that's just to recover. That's if we do it. When developers do new projects, they typically don't pay a tap fee, they build it and they go to tap.
So you're at twenty-eight hundred dollars?
You'd be looking at twenty-eight hundred dollars for a new customer.
If, how much does cost to put in a well?
It's variable, you know, it all depends how deep you have to go, but a well could cost you in this county anywhere, I think, from numbers I've heard, from two thousand to six thousand dollars.
If you can find the water?
Yeah, if you can find the water. I mean, if you could find a good spot shallow, you could probably get a well in for as little as two, three thousand dollars.
If we went higher, would that justify those extra lines that we were talking about?
The challenge on capacity fees, you can only use the capacity fees you collect to pay for new capacity. So when we collect that money, that goes into a separate bucket that only goes towards the expansion components of our capital program.
So when you're going into the thirty-six inch line, doing a parallel line for customers to be able to tap on?
You couldn't use capacity fees to pay for that parallel line?
And those parallel lines are not accounted for in that twenty-four hundred dollars. The thirty-six inch line is, but not the smaller service lines.
So how could you not use the capacity fees to pay for that, you can use it for the capacity fees to pay for the lines going there?
The, again, on, you know, the body of law around capacity fee, you're justifying those costs as essentially a buy-in cost. You're buying into the system to reimburse the county for the investment we've made in having that capacity for you. So it's the treatment plant, the major distribution. So the, you're not allowed under regulatory practices to take money you collect for capacity for building plant and pipeline and use it for renewal and replacement, water line extension for other retail customers who are not part of the regional network of pipes. So it's only these big pipes that are being included in that cost and not all the other pipelines that are in that cost.
So do you find that the higher fees prevent people from connecting?
I tell you, we have not seen any pushback from the development community at all.
Would it be seen on individual homeowners?
Yeah, it's hard to tell because if they're not coming in because the fee's too high, we're just not seeing them, so we don't know. And we don't keep, I'm not familiar with any records we keep that would tell us who was on a well and converted over. I just don't have that kind of information.
And on the short line water extension program, they pay for these fees.
That's correct.
And a lot of, and just even some of the staff we have that are on wells, if you have to put in any kind of significant system to treat your water, you will probably pay somewhere in that neighborhood, if not more.
The reason I ask, if you look at the areas that have the wells where there's arsenic issues, that twenty-four hundred dollars would be cost prohibitive for some of them to connect, even if the line was right in front of their home. So even though we, if we brought water to their homes, they would have no opportunity to do that because they can't refinance that into their home, where a new development is obviously in the purchase price of the home. So I wonder how much of that would force people to stay off of county water that really could benefit from it?
And one of the things, again, I think we can look at special assessment districts as a way to look at some of these areas, and if there's a potential for grant money, that's always positive, but our economic position as Union County doesn't lend us a lot to grant money. But if you do this as an assessment against property, you can roll, in my experience anyway and in other areas, you could roll in that capacity fee with the construction cost and essentially finance that whole thing against, as an assessment against property for a twenty-year basis. And that way, they're not having to shell out an upfront money, they're just paying that assessment on an annual basis. And the other advantage with that kind of a program, if the residents move after seven years, which is about the average turnaround on most homes, although in some of those parts of the community, those people have had their homes for five hundred years. But if you do turn it over, I mean, that assessment stays with the land, it doesn't stay with the property owner, so you pay for your proportional benefit that you've achieved by living there and not carrying that cost for the next twenty years if you're not the property owner anymore.
What's our current budget for the short line extension? Five hundred thousand dollars?
Five hundred thousand dollars a year.
Is that, how quickly is that used up each year?
Oh, immediately.
Maybe you just had four years ago.
Yeah, yeah, we still have at least a five-year backlog of properties that are downed by.
And where do you find most of that demand is coming from?
It's actually, it's scattered around the county. We actually plotted it up last year on our GIS system to see where it is. And it is a pretty good cross-section of the entire county, from Weddington to the northeast to the southwest parts of the county. So we're finding it almost everywhere.
Any benefits to expanding that from a county standpoint, from a service, and if so, would you have a recommendation on where to go from there?
You know, the benefit are to the property owner, I could tell you as a business benefit, no, there's no business benefit to the county, the money we expanded in short lines, we don't recover through the net revenue that those customers generate. So it's not, it's not a good business decision, which is why previous boards have limited the amount of money we would invest. I think our challenge is to, the reason why we plotted these all out, we wanted to see where are the current people that have connected and where are the new people that are asking to connect? Because we were looking for those patterns. Are there clusters of development that would be handled better through special assessment? And we didn't see a pattern, I mean, there, it's pretty much a shotgun out there. So I think until we explore other avenues and do some outreach with the community to find out where the demand is, I think under this program, it, this program was really designed to deal with the individual property owner, not to deal with area-wide issues.
So, I'm sorry. So with half a million dollars a year, how many are connecting for the half a million dollars?
Scott, do you know the number of projects and number of customers?
It varies, probably from twenty-five to thirty-five.
Are we past the first year?
I mean, the first year of science?
The first year of people, I call it the Kohl's method. You get up at four o'clock in the morning, you get the first in line.
Yeah.
You know, and that doesn't address any of the health issues in the county. I think we need to revisit that. I'd like to see you bring back to us that GIS map that you were talking about, because I think we can be much more helpful to our citizens if we take a different approach instead of first come, first served. I mean, you know, there are methods that you can, you can put weighted values if you've got people up in this area because the issue of arsenic and magnesium, magnesium is critical.
And that's a lot because of our slate belt.
Well, and that's true, that's true. And so how can we spend that, whether it's a half million dollars or one million or whatever, how can we best spend that money to help our citizens? Because some of the people coming, in the Kohl's method, I call it, you know, they just want water, they don't have a health issue. So I think we need to take a closer look at that.
The, and that would be my concern, if we're going to do that, I mean, what's, how many homes or how many connections are on that waitlist? Do we know? If we're still working on year one?
I think there's over a hundred and fifty applicants that apply in the program.
The way I look at with the expansion and everything we're doing, if there's a health issue, at least provide them the opportunity to connect. They may not want to, can't force them, but some of the individuals, I think, that have the least ability to deal with the arsenic in their well are the ones that we probably need to look at serving.
We do have a component, and I don't remember all the specifics, but when we bring that back, we can bring that to you as well, is we do have a component within the short line program as to if they have a bona fide, if the health department determines that that water is not safe to consume, they can bring in a letter to the county, and there are special provisions within the program for those type of individuals. I mean, granted, arsenic in well water does not sound like a positive thing, but there hasn't been a determination that you still cannot consume it. And I don't know that we've had anyone take advantage of the health.
I think we may have had one applicant on, and the health provision, the way the policy is right now, we essentially pay for the first thousand feet of pipe that goes in, and after that, the resident pays for any extension beyond that thousand feet. If it's a health issue, we share that cost of, from a thousand up to twenty-five hundred feet. So we share more of the cost if there's a documented health issue. But we've only had one person come in with a documented health concern on that water.
Our environmental health department presented over at the Department of Human Services the concern that proven that arsenic has an impact on dementia and Alzheimer's, and there's studies that I think we need to tie those two things together and find out what, how we can best serve these people.
I know there was a study done a few years ago, and I don't know that it was conclusive, but I know that, I think at the last presentation they made, that I think the board has said that that's something they want to examine a little bit further.
We'll certainly get with environmental, take a look at the data.
And again, you know, in any future presentation, we can come back with an idea of some costs associated with that. I still see that taking a, when you've got the ground open and you're putting the little pipe in, it would be cheaper than trying to come back later and do it. And with bypass going in from everything else, I mean, we're looking at a sewer situation, you say we're on elementary school right now, they're looking to put in a spray field. Anything that we can do now, we all know that eventually going to that area, especially with bypass, I just think that, you know, I think there's benefit in having clean water here, bypass is all they can tap into. Otherwise, we're just passing them by to give money to another area of the county which are gonna demand more stools and more services, and those same people are gonna have to pay taxes to pay for those services, and yet they, are we gonna condemn their land to go in front of their house with easement? Yeah, I'm not.
Hopefully not. Hopefully we'll stay on DOT, right?
We're not gonna give them clean water. You can bet I won't do it. So if you're going by their house for clean water, then I can see the benefit, and you may have somebody says, I don't wanna sell my land for that. But that would be a benefit that they could use, that would be a benefit to them and future generations that may own their property, et cetera. You know, look at that, because I think, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't want you to get too far down this road without giving us some options with that one.
Okay, we'll do that.
What would the drawback be of tapping into that thirty-six inch line, rather than if you didn't put in Plant A or Site A, you went down to B, Treatment Plant, or let's say Site A ended up being where it worked out, with tapping off on a twelve-inch or twenty-four-inch line, that way you don't have to double back around?
Well, that, you know, what you don't wanna do is on a major transmission line, do residential taps, where as you're going down the street, you're punching a bunch of holes in your major water line. I mean, the way to do it would be to run a parallel line, tap off of it with an eight or ten or whatever size was appropriate, and run a parallel line to treat, to serve that adjacent area. It's just a cost issue. I mean, it's who's gonna pay for that pipe breakdown? We do not do any water line extensions to serve new development other than the short line extension program. So there is no money's budgeted in our program to say, we're gonna run a water line down the street to serve this community in the future. That was policy direction from the 2011 master plan that said, we would not do that. Because it came into where do you draw that line and how far do you do that? We addressed it more on sewer than we did on water in 2011, and the issue there was, do we, as a county, start running major sewer truck lines up into basins to say where development will take place? Because at that point, the Board of County Commissioners becomes a controlling factor in where development will be and not be. But if you're gonna do that, then you've gotta recover that cost, and that, that cost then does get added to your impact fee, and your impact fee on sewer is already over three thousand dollars, you'd be adding another thousand dollars potentially. So the board policy then was not to do that.
Well, if you're asking us to raise this fee, to tap on those new customers that would tap on, wouldn't be paying for that system, would be helping pay for that system.
The tap fee could pay for a cost to run a distribution line down to an area, but not to run in front of everybody's home in that. So the example I would use, the capacity fees could be used to run a water line to a development and end at the front gate to that development, but not to run the water line throughout the development to serve each home. That cost would be part of, a cost for those property owners.
Bring back in the self-help type, it's an area where you run it past a development that is on well water now, the well, well water is not what it should be, the residents in that neighborhood could band together to put a tap, to put a water line through their neighborhood. And that's, that's some of the things that we've seen before with the self-help, and I know it's changed some since the days we were using it. Again, getting it as close as you can is beneficial to those types of projects that where that neighborhood decides to go in together and put that into their neighborhood.
So how are other counties dealing with this issue? This is not unique to Union County, and this is something, infrastructure and water and sewer is happening all over the country from a growth standpoint.
Union is a little unique in North Carolina. In fact, Union is very unique in North Carolina. We are only one of two counties in North Carolina that operate a regional water utility. So most of the utilities, you know, ninety-five percent of the major utilities in this state are municipal utilities. So municipal lines are driven in different directions than county's are driven. So you have a very defined municipal boundary, it is much more compact than a county-wide boundary. It is easier to make investment decisions and say, we're going to invest in running water lines here to promote development in certain areas. The challenge with the county is that, particularly as you get into the less developed areas of the county, you're running a water line out to serve a handful of customers, and there is no economic payback. So it becomes a betterment program, but it does not become an economic payback program. And that's a challenge when you're getting into county-wide, regional system like ours, and the areas we're talking about of arsenic issues are not densely populated areas, these are rural suburban type areas, and that is the challenge.
So what is the other county that has the regional?
Durham.
And how they tackle the problem?
I don't know what they're doing on that. I'm more familiar with Durham on the wastewater side, they run a regional wastewater program. I'm not familiar with their water program. That's all I have for you for today. Again, this was to give you an update on the water side. Next week, we'll be talking similarly with our wastewater plan, and then as part of that session, tying it together and giving you an update on the financial picture and the rates and what that looks like. The plan then would be, after these workshops, with the board, to get whatever input the board has in terms of questions, concerns, changes, get those incorporated, and then sometime probably in May or early June, bring back formal documents to the board on your regular agenda for you to adopt those final plans.
Move to recess and special meeting to reconvene at 6:20 PM in the board conference room, first floor, Union County Government Center. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed?
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.